Okay, it's six thirty-one, I'm calling this meeting of the Joshua City Council to order. We do have a quorum present. At this time, if everyone would. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, it's going to be led by Michelle Anderson and stay remain standing for indication by Mr. Mike Kip.
Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. And to the Republican Party, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and the Texas life. Pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Back your heads. Father, we thank you for having the opportunity to serve our city, Lord, and we thank you for the many blessings that you pour upon us. Father, we lift up a member of our police department, Lord, that went down this week, and we ask you to just continue the healing process in him, Lord. And our good friend Larry Woolley, Lord, we lift up his granddaughter who's having some some issues right now with her heart, Lord. We thank you for all these blessings that you will will grant us, we thank you for the safety for our servicemen and and women out there. Serving this fine city, Lord. We ask you to watch over us tonight as we go through our proceedings, Lord, and we ask you to give us your your wisdom. And and just continue to rain down upon us with your favor, Lord, we thank you for all these things, we pray in Christ's name.
Amen. In case you haven't done it, please make sure your cell phones are silenced. So we don't have that little interruption going on. Okay, this time we'll move into our work session, item number one, review, discuss questions related to the budget report. And financial statement for both July and August of twenty twenty-four. We're doing the July because we did not have it last month. So, Mr. Peacock.
Both reports are before you, there is really nothing unusual. About any of them, it's all been routine stuff, nothing significant. Just getting ready to close out the year's end. Happy to take if you have any specific questions, but. No emergencies, no alarming incidents that happened.
Do I have any questions? Same budget? Very good. Move on to the next item, update from the mayor and council members and updates from city staff members. Once again, we went to the old settlers reunion down in. Alvarado. If you guys never been to the ceremony where they honor our police and firefighters, you need to go, it's it's a neat neat thing. It was such an honor to to be able to. Be there when our officers were were noticed and and given their awards and everything. Had the library board meeting. Angela and I were able to attend and it was a. Fun, short little time, the city library combined with the school library is doing very well. And the utilization on it is just continues to climb every every time we hear the from the meetings and stuff. Shelley, anything going on type A?
We didn't.
Okay. Type B? Anything going on type B, what did he talk about?
You're gonna see the, they selected the parking. Where Steve? Oh, he's out, he's outside. They did make a selection on the equipment for the play structure by game time. I believe. Steve is working on finalizing that deal, they'll get it back for final approval and then you guys will see it. Next month, I'm not sure that you need to because you've already approved the part, but we're going to go through the process anyway. And make sure that we'll have the contracts for. Usually they have their own, so I don't know if we'll have Terry draw one, but we'll put it through the process for review, y'all will see it next month. They expect delivery of the materials by the end of the year and believe that they can sixty day build time and should. I may regret saying this, but they say it should be ready by spring.
Awesome.
Can we post a public update on that one?
It's in the newsletter for tomorrow and it's already posted to go on Facebook first of next week.
Great.
Any, yes, sir. You swayed it at me?
It's best in class.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to just add that. We had the animal control board meeting this week and the. Girls are over there working that since we've gone through our. Manpower decrease, we're doing a bang up job, they're keeping up with things, there's a. They had a nice little presentation that they gave us on their on their status of things, they're doing a lot of big things, a lot of, a lot of cool things and. I just want to give them some hope and praise. Good job.
Let me add to that. I had two big old dogs in my neighborhood and the two ladies came out and I was amazed at their patience. They worked with those dogs over probably about at two hours. But they got them coughed and got them out of there and they did a tremendous job.
Awesome. Thank you. Good to hear. Anybody else have anything? Okay, this time we'll move into our public forum. This building here is speaking specifically about the CAD nomination, so we'll do that in a little bit. So we don't have anybody else that's signed up for public forum?
I think we did one.
Mr. Goulding, yeah, I got that. Okay.
Mayor, where are we on? Can we do the management?
Yes, I was getting ready to head that direction, so go ahead, Mr. Peacock.
Jay? We'll go ahead and do your stuff now. For. Counsel, I believe most of y'all have been made aware. After our interview process, we have appointed promoted Jay from captain to chief of the fire department. And he'll, they're gonna do his official badge pending tonight. And doing that for him is a former chief that he worked for a few years ago. Who's gonna do that offer, you're gonna introduce your guest.
Brady Chapman is a part two from Forest Hill. It was a little bit longer than a few years ago. We was worse for WIS now.
I did twenty-one years, we worked, Jake and I worked together for a long time, so he was my firefighter, he was my driver, then he was a lieutenant underneath me when I was chief. That's a good guy.
And then John, the next to him, Darwin Locke, that I got interviewed, he's currently working out, Darwin. He's tied to Forest Hill.
Awesome.
Yeah, and then my thing is second room. I don't have a good girl.
People actually showed up to claim to be related. Nice, nice. So he's done an outstanding job the last couple of months through the interim process, keeping things running and now. Sometimes the person you're looking for is right in front of you, and that was the case here, so we're glad to have you. Congratulations. Go ahead.
Thank you, Billy.
Congratulations, Chief. Chief or acting chief over, I think we've got a couple of new officers you wanted to introduce to us tonight, didn't you?
Officers, can you step forward? Good evening, Council. The gentleman just started with our department Monday, this morning at two P M. This is Dylan Mansell, he has fourteen years experience, I believe all of it in Johnson County, Detective. We just got him from Grandview where he served a half year, so he brings detective experience, he's a firearms instructor, a patron instructor, he has a lot of good things. He can certainly utilize. And this is Officer Villalobos, he worked at the county for seven years. And we just obtained him from their transport division. And. We're really happy to have.
Awesome.
And this is the city council.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome to Joshua County.
Thank you, sir. You're a good guest.
Thank you. Didn't bring the little ones? You got a couple of huge rewards. Thanks, you'll see.
Open to talk to us.
When we have fins out. Before you get back into the regular flow of town, or you got something else? I don't. All right, at this time, I'm going to issue a proclamation for Constitution Week. And I understand we had a guest for that. Would you be kind enough to introduce yourselves?
I'm Betsy Russian, I'm the chapter agent, president of the United States Winston chapter this year. And we thank you all for issuing this and hope to encourage all of you to actually read the Constitution from yourself and spend it with kids. You're open to target and create some.
And I'm Ida Foster, and our chapter is with the National Society of Dollars in Reverend.
So. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the consta- Constitution. Of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas the Constitution of the United States stands as a beacon of democracy and freedom. Ensuring the fundamental rights and liberties of all citizens and serving as a framework of our government. And whereas it is of utmost importance that all citizens fully understand and appreciate provisions and principles. Of the Constitution in order to defend, preserve, and strengthen our nation's democratic institutions. And whereas the United States Congress by joint resolution in nineteen fifty-six designated September seventeenth. Through the twenty-third of each year as Constitution Week inviting citizens to reflect upon the importance of the Constitution. And celebrate this founding document. And whereas the observance of Constitution Week provides an opportunity for citizens. To reaffirm their commitment to the ideal set forth in the Constitution. To educate themselves and further generations about the enduring reverence. Of these principles and to participate in the rights and responsibilities granted by this document. Now therefore I Scott Kimball, Mayor of the City of Joshua, Texas, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as Constitution Week.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you, now for what you did, thank you. Thank you, ladies. I have another proclamation to read.
You can run to order.
Yeah, probably do. Not sure. You're welcome. We have a representative from Brookshires here this evening. And would you be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir?
Michael Morrison, consular at Brookshires here in Joshua.
Thank you, Michael, for being here this evening. Whereas Brookshires Grocery Company has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the community of Joshua, Texas through their generous donations. And continued involvement in local initiatives. And whereas Brookshires by providing water to the Joshua Fire and Police Departments. Has played a crucial role in ensuring the health, safety, and well-being of the brave firefighters and police officers as they serve and protect our community. And whereas Brookshires ongoing contributions to our city extend beyond this single act of generosity. Exemplifying their dedication to fostering a spirit of service, unity, and support for our local residents, first responders, and civic programs. And whereas the City of Joshua greatly values the strong partnership we have with Brookshires. And recognizes the importance of their leadership in promoting community involvement, well-being, and neighborly care. Now therefore I Scott Kimball, Mayor of the City of Joshua, Texas, do hereby proclaim our heartfelt thanks and appreciation. To Brookshires Grocery Company for their outstanding contributions to the Joshua Fire and Police Department and their continued commitment to our community. Chief. Chiefs. Let's get a picture with him with you guys here while you're here. Our guys, police, all you people. Get close together like you like each other.
Better get a wide angle.
squeeze in like you like each other, come on, boys. Anglin, thank you for bringing that to our attention, that's, that is awesome, they just donated six pallets?
Three pallets.
Three pallets? Of water?
And this is not a new thing, they've been doing this for years. Yeah, this is a, this, this recognition is long overdue.
Yeah.
It's, it's very overdue.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, we're going to have a presentation by Johnson County's Transportation Board. Or for Johnson County's Transportation Bond.
Hey, Mayor, Council. I'm Cole Friedrich, I'm the Johnson County engineer. I wanted to thank you for your time tonight, the opportunity to discuss our transportation bond program. That the Fisher Sports called in election four of the August twelve. This bond is primarily focused on on system projects and intended to. Intended to. Help with the safety mobility and that's why I affectionate projects. Here to give a brief overview, we didn't stand much with three seconds.
Hey, our council members, my name is Stan Lynch, I'm the county director of county practice, when you're for freezing nipples. A lot of county work always say, but there's a lot more here in the metroplex with the growth we're having. Again, a wide family bond funding of the transportation. With the growth that we're experiencing in the metroplex right now with what I call the suburban ring counties. It's. Not happening just here, it's happening all over the state, but especially here with our growth and the influx of new people. The growth of subdivisions in the counties, it's important because of the transportation infrastructure issues that we deal with. And the county is doing that as part of your bond program. Also, in order for counties with limited tax revenues to be able to deal with. The growth in the transportation infrastructure that's happening today, there needs to be partnerships for. Both with the state, Tech Stop, as well as federal funding partners with the more central Texas council governments. Who is the N P L, that planning organization for this region. So, again, we're trying to leverage the county's dollars to bring construction funds for construction. Of these new railways and the new infrastructure that we're talking about as part of this program. And then again, developing the regional partnerships with the cities, the few. With the pub and with our independent school districts as well. They, they depend upon transportation to get students to and from school and safety and stuff of of importance. And then that, that brings me to. These type of programs expedite the safety that Tech Stop is trying to to develop in the state of Texas. To eliminate as much as we can traffic deaths in the state of Texas. So, all of this together is kind of why the county is looking to. Do this transportation bond program. With respect to the cost of the transportation bond program. The average taxable home value in Johnson County is a little bit over two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars per home. The financial advisors for the county have basically thought of what they face will be the tax ramifications. And they're looking at less than a penny with respect to the cost of this bond program to the tax payers of the county. Which ends up being a less than twenty-five dollars of. Per. House, per home, per year, so that's two dollars and eight cents a month. So it's a, it's, we feel like that it's a good program. This is the map of the Johnson County bond projects. This map shows all of the sixteen projects that have been selected. By both the commissioners' board, the transportation steering committee that was created. This is also the public involvement. Through our transportation thoroughfare planning effort that we've been working on since January of this this year. To identify the various projects within the county. And you can see they're, they're spread pretty much all over the county, but. The, the themes that we, that we've come up with with respect to these projects. It, it involves railroad crossing improvements, and you're well aware of the railroad crossing. Problems and issues that you face as a city. You have three major railroad companies that operate in and through Johnson County and that's. That's real relatively unusual for a county to have that many operating rail companies. And so railroad crossings are creating issues that we're gonna try to. Try to at least study and try to make recommendations to improve this in the county. The other part is a major east-west arterial. Through our transportation thoroughfare planning process, we've. Basically identified working with Tech Stop and with the N P O. That there needs to be another east-west major corridor through Johnson County. And so that's one of the projects that we're going to be looking at and studying and recommending is true as well. There's also, you can see on the map, one point one, one point five, and four point three there. In the western part and the southern part of the county. We're looking at doing some feasibility studies with Tech Stop and the N P O. To identify additional corridors that can hopefully relieve some of the truck traffic that. Johnson County is dealing with, with the growth in the county. And then last but not least, safety and mobility, that's always one of the key things that we're looking for and looking to solve. In any transportation booking program. Next slide. Railroad crossings, again, the kind of orange color there are the many different railroad companies that operate through. Johnson County. And you can see there's several different projects there identified. Both from the west out in the godly area all the way through, and of course you can see the red. Active transportation improvement program projects that Tech Stop's already working on, and that's right outside the door here. We're gonna be coordinating with Tech Stop and the N P O on that project, but we're also looking at project three point one. Which is where you have twenty-eight eighty and nine seventeen come together and the railroad crossing is right there. That's the unique rail line. And so we're gonna be studying that and looking to recommend a, a crossing over the railroad track. Solve that problem. And that again is part of that, you know, east-west, that creating. Excellent. This is a blow up of that section that involves the city of Joshua. You can see we're in the orange color there to the east, those are active tech stop projects that Tech Stop's working on right now, with effective design. And we're going to be again coordinating with Tech Stop on the, on those projects, but then we're gonna tie. The county's projects, which you can see there, starting in Godly, one point two, all the way over to three point one. To. Study, do some planning, and recommend, make recommendations with respect to improvements. To make that east-west corridor more viable for the people that live in Johnson County. So those are a major part of the program right there. And especially, I mean, Tech Stop's been working with the city, I'm sure already would expect to get a portion from Joshua here. Out west to Chisen Trail Parkway. We're gonna be looking a little bit more at one point three and two point one out in the. The fast developing areas out to the west of Chisen Trail. And hopefully can make some improvements working with Tech Stop and the N P O on that section as well. These are the three feasibility alignment studies that we're going to be working on for the county. Again, one point one is basically looking at taking FM twenty-three thirty-one. And crossing to the west of Godly over the railroad tracks and over Highway one seventy-one. And bringing it down to the existing portion of FM twenty-three thirty-one, there that you see, that you see in the middle. We're gonna work with the county to recommend right away whits for that existing portion. And we look at further planning on that in the future, but we need to identify with working with Tech Stop and the N P O. Of the other alignments up on the western and northern side, and then one point five, four point three. That would then tie into one seventy-four and one seventy-one as far as bringing traffic around the southern part. And providing alternative. Alignments for truck traffic to hopefully relieve some of the truck traffic from including. In favor of Godly team and the southern part of the county there. This is a heat map that was developed as part of our transportation thoroughfare planning process. The information that we use to create this heat map. Was from Tech Stop and the N P O. And basically, these are. The, this is how we identify the safety and mobility improvements that we're recommending as part of the. Bond program. And you can see from the red and orange colors there, there's quite a bit of accidents. There's a lot of congestion, safety issues, and all of these projects you see there on the map are gonna be like. Intersection improvement, right lane, turn, right lip, turn lanes, traffic signal improvements, roadway improvements. To try to improve the safety at those locations within the county. Here, the key election dates. Like you said, Paul mentioned, Johnson County Michigan Ford has already called an election for, they did that on August twelfth. The first day of early voting for the election is October twenty-first. The last day of early voting is November first, and then of course, election day is November fifth. And Bobby will be standing for the bond program at that time. This is, this shows the program website that we've created for the county. You can go to this website and it will provide you with any of the information that you've seen tonight, but also specific information on each one of the projects. A description of the. description of the project, and the, the, the boundaries or the segments that, uh, are involved in, in each one of the projects. So, uh, we encourage you to go to the, uh, website. It also gives, um, dates and times for, uh, presentations like this at other city councils, uh, and other, uh, organizations, or, uh, chambers, that kind of thing, and, uh, so you can get that information and, uh, provide that to your, uh, citizens if, if they weren't here tonight. Uh, the contact, uh, for, uh, Johnson County is Jennifer Bando Lane, who is the, uh, Director of Public Work for the county, and of course, her information is on this slide and also on the website. Um, uh, so I think that's, uh, to go ahead and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, anyone? No, sir. I got a couple. Uh, and Larry, I, I apologize, I don't want you to think I'm coming at you or, or anything here. Cog's getting ready to spend seventy-five million dollars to install electric charging stations for less than ten percent of the vehicles on Texas highways. All right, that's seventy-five million dollars wasted money that should be being privately funded, you know, the, the government shouldn't be putting these charging stations in, it should be done privately. Apparently cog's got money to just throw away and waste. What are they sending to Johnson County that might help not need the bond? That, I mean, isn't there funds out there that they apparently have that we should be getting and we're not getting our fair share of?
And, and, uh, that, that, that's a tough question for somebody who's not on the cog and, and all, and, and I understand that, but I'm being asked to get out and support this bond, which by the way, I do. Uh, we, we, we need it, we desperately need it, and if we don't do it, it's not gonna get done. Uh, that's, that's the bottom line. You know, we, we don't get funds from cog, we don't get a lot of help from the state, you know, if, if we wanna fix our county, we gotta do it ourselves, and that's, that's just what it's coming down to. But it, it, it just, it just gets my goat when I get a letter wanting me to get on a Zoom meeting with cog and say, oh yeah, let's spend seventy-five million dollars to help less than ten percent of the people on the road keep their cars running. That, that's, it's just kinda, yeah, it's tough. It, it, it's tough for me to accept that. So, looking at the projects, the way they're lined up and everything, you know, are we certain that this money is going to be what we need it to be to do the projects that are, are number one, the highest priority, and number two, it's actually going to happen? You know, are we gonna have this money set around for fifteen, twenty years before we start seeing dirt turning?
Right. And, and that, you know, the Ohio County is doing this, and from a reasonable perspective, we've been doing transportation bond programs since the growth started late in, in the early two thousand, like two thousand seven, eight timeframe, and what's happened is that the counties that had to step up because of the growth and just the increase in transportation, uh, that's out there, and, uh, what, what we found is that when the county steps up to work with the city, work with school business, uh, and to then coordinate and work with TechStop and the MPO, we found that, uh, the money is a lot more, there's a, a better chance that money comes to the county projects and, uh, you get the improvement that you need. One of the things that we do, working with the county, is by getting these projects, uh, environmentally clear and ready for construction, right-of-way at fire, uh, utilities relocated, um, we compete, we, me, the county, competes not just for the, what we're disparate dollars, but we compete for statewide dollars that it typically happens that other projects in the state don't have, they, they didn't get alignment or clearance, or they don't have right of way. And so TechStop looks for other projects, shovel-ready projects, to go put their money on, and that's what we're competing for. We're competing not just for four, we're dollars, not just for metroplex dollars, but for dollars across the state of Texas. The other part of that is that from a federal standpoint, when you step up and you become more active in the planning process, again, getting projects shovel-ready, um, there are, just like TechStop, there are federal dollars that come to the metro, the metroplex that cities and other counties don't have their clearances, or don't have their laws that are done, and they're also looking for projects to put money on. So that's kind of what we're trying to do, is the county is stepping up to try to take advantage of those opportunities to bring money to Johnson County instead of it going to other places. So, you know, we can't do anything about necessarily the federally laws, rules, regulations, whatever, we have to work within that, but we can compete not only at a statewide level, but at a national level, bring money to this county, and that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Comments? Thank y'all very much for coming this evening. You're, you're welcome. Larry?
Land Dogma.
How's your granddaughter? We're praying. There's anything we can do listening. All right. This time we'll move to the next item, which is the consent agenda. We'll discuss, consider, possible action on the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions, comments on the minutes from last month? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
We approve minutes.
Hey, I've got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Shelley, to approve the minutes for the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Janus. Okay, at this time we'll move into our regular agenda. Item number one, discuss, consider, and possible action on an ordinance approving the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Peacock?
Well, here it is, our child of several months of work. Um, adding to your statements, there is a handouts that were put together, uh, we were going through, making sure we had everything right, and found a couple little typos that we needed to correct, uh, so that's what, uh, we didn't get it in time for your packet. And also on the last page of that, a little packet, there is the rates that, uh, y'all had asked for, for the, uh, the rest of the county, the other cities in the county of what proposed rates. Some of those have already been approved, others haven't, but those are the proposed rates for those other cities, and we weren't able to track down one city, uh, to locate it, but we, I got the rest of it for you. So as it stands now, the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget designed to provide the overall financial plan to provide city services for the upcoming year. In addition, this proposed budget provides the funding for planned expenditures, contingency appropriations, and operating funds that total seven point two seven three million dollars. This budget is balanced and restores fund balance reserves. Revenues over expenditures are three hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The amount of sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars could be allocated by the council as needed, be remaining funds. Uh, the budget is based on a proposed tax rate of zero point six eight nine four six eight cents per hundred dollars. According to the Tax Assessor's Office in Johnson County, the certified values have an increase of five hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars, fifteen point two two percent, is projected for this fiscal year. The proposed tax rate dedicated for operation of the city is point five one two six eight per hundred dollars, and the rate dedicated to debt service is point one seven six eight five zero per one hundred dollars. I'd be happy to go through the rest of these funds if you want, but those were pretty much unchanged from the last reading, uh, that we had.
I have a question. On the last page of the proposed page, the, the number says, uh, zero point six nine oh two one three.
That's the voter approval rate that we could go to that, we'll go and just end it there. And the, uh, sales tax revenues, generation of sales tax, based on one-ten tax rate, uh, which is the second largest source of revenue for the general fund, is projected to be one point three eight six million dollars, which reflects a decrease of fourteen thousand dollars. We are seeing a little bit of a slowdown in sales tax. Um, we typically see that this time of year, and then it tends to come back up in holiday months, but we don't normally see it go down as low as, as, as what it sounds, um, this year, so claims are continuing to slow down. Um, what else do I need to tell you? So we've tried to provide for the safety and security of the community, maintain and improve existing infrastructure, plan for orderly and responsible growth and sustainability, and provide responsible fiscal policy. What this budget does not include, uh, or, or some of the things that have occurred in this budget, we've, uh, reduced one full-time position to part-time, one department, it does have some frozen positions, um, we have, there is no cost of living increase or raises in this budget for, uh, any staff member, there is no vacation sellback funded this year, uh, and the longevity pay, uh, we, we'll put a policy in place that caps longevity at fifteen years at eight dollars per month, and you can go from four to eight. Um, but I think what we're gonna do is put a policy in place that'll just have it at eight, obviously be changed by the council, that's your pleasure. I would also like to acknowledge, um, first and foremost, Marcy Friedland, um, who way more than assisted, she, she is the author of this budget without a doubt, um, and she has been assisted by Amber, uh, Brittany, and myself, um, she kinda told us what she needed, and, uh, this has been her child that she has put together, and she's done a fantastic job. Y'all are getting a, um, the summary of what, what it, uh, what the budget is, but as it goes out to department heads, there's a lot more involved, where they can actually look and see where they budgeted and had them, so they don't have to question, was it from this area, this area, it's, it's, there's a lot more detail to the actual documents that'll go out to the department heads. She's done an outstanding job, um. I've been happy with her ever since we got her here, just because of the money she's brought in for investments, and, uh, uh, this just guarantees she'll be with us for another year, hopefully, or three or four. And she's also here to answer any questions that you guys may have, um, she's probably a lot quicker on the draw for these than I, but we've, we've tried to get everything that we could, it's been difficult, um, we've had to make some difficult decisions, there's gonna be a few more difficult decisions to make, but we believe that, uh, we've got a solid budget for you.
Uh, you mentioned, uh, frozen position, which...
Uh, well, uh, there are, right now, there are frozen positions in the police department, animal control, and public works. Um, there's gonna be, there's gonna be some amendments to those that you guys are gonna see in probably the next sixty days. There are some that make more sense than others, for example, I'll tell you, the, the animal control, uh, manager position, I, I think is not a good one to freeze, there's controlled drugs in there that they use, there's a, a lot of reporting that goes into that, and the staff that we have over there, while they're doing a fantastic job, they're, they're fairly new to the job and inexperienced, and not capable of doing that role, and right now it's kind of falling to Amber to take care of, and, and it's just time that we don't have. So we're, we're gonna, I'm gonna provide some other opportunities to make that up and, and replace that person, but we'll make it up with some other areas where we have room to make some cuts.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say on the capping of the longevity pay, I understand this year we are trying to tighten our budget, but I would, um, like for that to not be a permanent cap, but if it's something that, that is discussed every year, because you cannot put a price on good staff, and if you're talking about capping a bonus for those that are here for fifteen-plus years, if it's not necessary, then, and I think that we had a conversation at another time about if we should cap it, and the council agreed we would not like to do that.
Yeah, the policy, there'll, there'll be a policy coming out on this, um, thi- this recommendation, I believe, is for this year, um, and then, so if y'all want some different direction, Virginia, are you catching this?
Yes, right now the policy states for, uh, for, it shall not fall below four dollars per, so we would be thinking of, uh, we'd be, uh, fifty-year gap, we still would be assigning a dollar amount, and, yeah, that was brought in.
I wanna make sure...
Eight dollars is for this year.
Right. And I wanna make sure that we don't forget that, that needs to be discussed every year.
The, the cap itself.
The cap itself.
Not, not the dollar amount, the cap itself. Anybody else? Any questions? Any comments?
Good job.
Uh, e- e- every time I walk in and Brittany's in Mike's office, I watch her cringe. Um, I've, I've wiggled and moved, and I've come up with some pretty wild ideas on, on some things to try to do, uh, without having any kind of a tax increase, but the number one thing on my mind is our employees, and this budget does not include any kind of cost of living increase for our employees. Uh, we have a, a, a reserve balance, uh, we, we set that amount by council decision to be, uh, three months.
That's correct.
Uh, at a certain percentage and so on and so forth. It helps in a lot of different ways, like for our bond rating and, uh, all that kind of stuff. However, I don't believe that if we are below that balance and we take care of our employees with a minimal COLA, uh, I think that would be one of the best things we could do and worry about the ramifications of being a little bit under our, our reserve balance as, as per policy. Um, I would like to see at least a three percent COLA. And if, uh, the numbers that I think I've got from Marcy, uh, three percent COLA, uh, would be about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, three hundred and three dollars total into the budget that would have to come out of the reserve to cover it this time. Um, I think that's, that's a minimal amount for us to pay, to let our employees know that, hey, times are tough, it's, it's rough, but we still value you to try to help as much as we can. And that's all I've got to say about that.
Is that a one-time shot, or is that something that we're gonna have to come up with, that's more money next year to cover?
It's a percentage. Yeah. So, so if you had a base pay of, of X number of dollars, you're gonna add three percent to it, so the next year that base number starts at...
Starts at that three percent.
With the plus three percent, and then...
Okay.
It, it is a cumulative increase, so...
Where did you come up with your three percent? Oh, yeah, that's kind of what I guessed.
Yeah, I just pulled it out.
Colors are usually based on a lot of variables and and a three percent. I work at a big company and I don't get a three percent COLA. So.
Let me say.
That out there.
I work very large company.
The state just came out and said, anybody that's been retired over twenty years, we're going to give you a hundred dollars. Hundred bucks if you if the tax be working hard over twenty years.
Yep.
My bed before the state.
I know where I'd love to shove that hundred dollars.
Yeah, I just I just don't, I just don't want us to commit to to a three percent without really knowing what the three percent.
I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors. We have that, we have that amount, we have that reserve balance amount. Set and I am the. Everybody up here is wanting to do right by the staff. I mean, this is not an easy decision, but we can't make. A knee jerk reaction on something without understanding the ramifications and I don't understand what the ramifications of that would be. I think we talked about. Setting a point in time in the near future to talk about anything additional, where that would be spent. And I think that we should continue with that and and that's definitely something if we if there's anything we can do for the staff, it's definitely on the table. But we have to understand the ramifications of it.
What are the ramifications of being under our reserve policy reserve requirement?
On the fly, without preparation.
We've had this discussion. I know what the answer is, so.
I can't hear.
And if we have one large million revenue. Which can happen is having you with all the services. We have a larger amount that we have to come in this year. So if we have that next year. It it could be the similar situation to the one that we're in this past year. Where we're. Totally back from bound and also balancing current, but this year we haven't. Revenue to finishers going that's not stacked, so. It's hard to know and to be bitter and to the business or following the one that we're working on, which eventually we just. These variables, they are large and they'll change depending on.
It's unknown in either direction. It it can have a, it can have an impact in either direction. But we as a council could at any point look at our budget and if it suddenly starts raining funds into our budget, can make a decision mid-year to do something. Could we not?
And then to your points, there are other.
I think that that's something that we can commit to continuously looking into to see what opportunities there are within reason, not putting our. City finances at risk. But again, trying to look for any opportunity to take care of the staff because we recognize all of the biggest stats that we.
Johnny? I'm with her.
Good. Might I have a question before we talk anymore about that? Tonight, we're going to be speaking about. Fire. Maybe a cost of fire truck in the future. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what would that do to our debt ratio? I mean, I I want to give everybody a raise. That's the most important things our personnel. But what would that do to our debt ratio if we were to take three percent out? And we're going to make that money.
Well, the the debt ratio and and the reserve fund balance are.
While I'm looking at.
Well, I mean, the one of the things that the fund balance does or the reserves does is that. It helps show stability in in our funds and so it affects our credit rating, which we have a very good one. And and reducing that or having that continually reduced could affect that. They could raise our, move us up. Under the rating that we get annually, which we haven't had a a decrease in that rating and we've we've been increasing. Why I say we've been decreasing, we've got a very good one for city our size and so. When that balance is not there, it takes away a little bit of that security in case of some event that Marcy described or some natural disaster and. All of a sudden now there's a reduction in the amount of property taxes that are paid into the appraisal district that doesn't come back out and so it's. It's designed to do that. Ninety days is kind of the standard and municipal government to have. Some have more, some have less. But I I also, I think to Shelley's point, and while I understand the the mayor's position, we talked about it today. I know Merle, you and I have discussed it at times. I would love to give everybody an increase, but this has been a very tough budget and it's gonna. It it's we're not, it's not over. There's going to be some continued changes going and I believe. That there there can be a conversation in a COLA increase. Probably sooner than mid-year, I I would think. Just because of the way some things that are laying out and some some restructuring that's going to happen. That you're going to hear about probably over the next thirty to sixty days. That's going to free up. A pretty good amount of funding and so I I think that that conversation can be had again. Are we going to lose people over no increase? It's it's possible. We might. But we always run the risk of losing some. We we try to take care of them in in other ways and. We've tried to strengthen our benefits over the years and. Nobody's more pleasant to work for than me. Just ask any of them, especially this one. Okay, and I I think we'll, I I think that we'll survive it. But. It it is a message to the staff, but they all know that this has been a difficult year. The department heads know it. Everybody's tightened up their belts and we've asked them to do that and everybody across the country is having to do that. We're not alone. Other cities are doing it too. It's it's is the economy is not good and. We'll recover whatever we do. The, but I think the safe play. Is to, let's give it a long time and talk about it again. We will make it, we will make it work whatever you decide, but. I wouldn't suggest more than three. I I think, but I I think it's doable, but I think it's safer if we had this conversation in about sixty days.
I feel like the employees appreciate everything that y'all have said too, but. Knowing that it's not completely off the table, I think gives some ease of mind, but I think most employees understand that we want to make sure that. This city remains successful, so.
Any more discussion? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Take the motion, we accept the budget as. As it's written.
So I have a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Dakota, to accept the twenty. October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirty, twenty twenty-five budget as presented. Any further discussion? Real call vote? Johnny?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
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 Dakota? And no. We'll get passes six one. Okay, item number two, discuss the center of possible action on ratifying the property tax increase in the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Mr. Pecot.
This is the. Vote to to ratify the vote for the property tax that was just approved. In this this fiscal year budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five at. Zero point six eight nine four six eight cents per entry.
Any discussion, questions? No discussion?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve the. Increase the tax rate to zero six eight nine four six. I didn't.
Four six eight.
Four six eight.
I have to clarify that to ratify the vote for the budget.
Ratifying the vote.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Mike. To ratify the property tax increase for the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Any further discussion? Roll call vote? This one, okay, all those in favor? Okay, six one. Item number three, three, we'll now open a public hearing on a proposal to adopt the Advilorin property tax rate for tax year twenty twenty-four. Mr. Pecot.
Most of the public hearing to support the tax rate that was just adopted.
So we've had that before we adopted it?
The tax rate hasn't been adopted yet. We just ratified the the proposed tax rate for the budget.
Okay. Okay.
It's kind of a weird part of state law.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may just remind, normally in a past what we did when you approved the budget, we took two votes. One was to approve, one was ratified just under that one item. Cities are now simplifying it into two separate items.
So anybody from the public hearing, anyone want to say about the tax rate? Any other discussion? Okay, at seven thirty-three, we'll close the public hearing. Item number four, discuss the center of possible action on an ordinance adopting the city of Joshua twenty twenty-four Advilorin tax rate. And this does take a real call vote. Okay, any discussion, any questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion that we expect. The Advilorin property tax rates. Don't have it in front of me.
Six eight nine four six eight. I'll second it. Okay, the motion by Shelley, seconded by Dakota, to accept the Advilorin property tax rate of zero point six eight nine four eight six. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Johnny?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Dakota? Shelley?
Yes.
No. Okay, at seven thirty-four, we're going to open a public hearing on a request for a conditional use permit regarding approximately point six.
One there.
Excuse me. Back up. Discuss, consider possible action on ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Mr. Pecot.
This is the the end of year budget amendment to balance the the current budget. There's been a few changes. And expenditures that that came up, there are listed on page eighty-one of your budget document or your packet and the net change is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We close.
So that's additional expenses or?
Yes.
Right. Any questions, discussions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Prove ordinance amended the twenty twenty-four budget as presented.
I got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Angela, to accept the ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now, item number six. At seven thirty-five, we'll open a public hearing on a request for a conditional use permit regarding approximately point six two acres of land in the EH Elman subdivision, county of Joshua, Johnson, Texas. Located at one oh nine Oak Street to allow for the construction of an accessory dwelling. Mr. Malvinado.
Property in zone residential single family. Additional use permit is to allow for construction for the accessory door. Accessory dwellings may be maintained within the single family residential zoning districts. Within the agricultural world district, single family use and then the HP district under the following provisions. The accessory dwelling shall require an approved conditional use permit. Planning and zoning board recommended approval of the following stipulations at the September third meeting. The accessory dwelling unit must be used by the same person for persons of the immediate family as the main dwelling. The accessory dwelling must be constructed to the rear of the main dwelling, separate from the main main dwelling. The accessory dwelling unit may be constructed only with the issuance of a building permit and shall be constructed out of the same material as the main dwelling. The accessory dwelling may not be sold separately from the cell or the entire property. Main dwelling shall not have a separate electric heater. Shall shall not be supplied or otherwise utilized of a short, short term. Separate requirement and shall be the same as what the main dwelling. The accessory dwelling unit shall not be permitted without a name or primary dwelling.
Thank you. Are the owners present?
Yes.
Okay, the owners like to make a presentation?
No.
No? Okay, are there, is there anybody here that's for this? Anybody speaking against? Would you like to rebut? All right. At seven thirty-eight, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to item number seven, discuss the center of possible action on approving an ordinance for a conditional use permit regarding approximately point six two acres of land. In the EH Elman subdivision, county of Johnson, Texas, located at one oh nine Oak Street to allow for the construction of an accessory dwelling. If I have any questions?
What is it going to be? I've built an accessory building. They didn't tell me anything.
It's going to be like a.
Mother-in-law house.
Mother-in-law house, sweet. I I think there's a. A person that needs care is is why they're asking for the permit.
My wife may build one for me back there.
I thought you already had a doghouse back there.
Uh, yeah, it's a dog guy.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Angela, seconded by Merle, to approve ordinance for a conditional use permit regarding the property at one oh nine Oak Street. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, folks. All right, item number eight, discuss, consider possible action on an interlocal cooperation agreement for dispatching services for budget year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Sergeant Fulger. Fulger or Fulliger?
Fulliger.
Fulliger, okay. Took me how many years to get? I knew you were. That's what I said. Sorry, Fulger.
Common agreement, bearers last year's was a slight increase. It will cost us thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one cents to take dispatch services through the valley. There's not that many options available to us. We are trying to do for what we're doing. Perhaps in the future, another option might be cheaper, but this is the only game in town. Like I said, in parents last year, I didn't see any change.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve interlocal cooperation agreement for dispatching services budget year included twenty-four.
And I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Angela to discuss, consider and or to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for dispatch. Okay, got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Angela to discuss, consider and, or to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for dispatch services for the budget year twenty four twenty five. Sorry about the typo on that, guys. So, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number nine, discuss, consider impossible action on a resolution nominating a candidate for the Johnson County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Uh, Ms. Holloway?
Yes, Mayor City Council, an election will be held in December to determine who will serve on the Board of Directors for appraisal district for year twenty five, twenty six. The first step is to accept nominations. You can nominate up to five people to be on the ballot. Once, the next step will be, once we get the ballot, we will have a total of fifty six votes.
Dwayne Goulding, the current president of our CAD board is present and has asked to speak.
Chairman of the board? Mayor Campbell, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. But I think I said, Mayor Campbell, in fact, I hope you should have got a copy of it. Uh, I won't go through the entire thing, but I want to draw your attention to the breadth and depth of experience that we have on this field. We have, uh, leadership experience in schools, building administration, education. We've got executive leadership experience in private sector. For access one, private sector, and the non-profit sector. We have a great experience and we have experience in finance, but that's a big, big degree, man, we got this. I would believe that last year, the three incumbents made a commitment that if we were elected, we could do some things. We bring transparency, we bring accountability, and we deliver very much of those promises today. If you look at the website, we have all kinds of education material, information available to taxpayers that we never had before. We have an active taxpayer liaison. Turns out we had one before, never knew it, now we have one. The dollar website, she actively supported taxpayers, and that's what we wanted to make sure taxpayers understand what the system looks like, understand how work is in the system, that they get a fair share. From a financial standpoint, we've, uh, I wouldn't make five thousand dollars a month expenses. I think paying the treasury management fee and bank. And we have a plan on it next year. We've got four hundred fifty five thousand dollars in budget that was proposed. And we've opened a meeting that the board, I mean, four meetings that were voted. Previously, the board met during the, but everybody's at work. We moved, we ate evening, nobody attended. We moved it to the evenings. We were there with twenty five, seventy five people, so forty people. We've had to move the meetings to the Congress Center in order to accommodate that size spread. If everybody's got an opinion on prices, see if they're real long. But anyways, the candidates are listed in your package, myself, Wayne Goulding, Amy Lingo, John Wood, Brandon Potts, and Jim Coswell. So we're soliciting your nominations and that will be filed, possibly be on the ballot, and then we'll be back for March the twelfth, after your votes. Any questions, if you have any, try to answer them.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Morgan?
No, I appreciated the letter that he wrote, and it's, and I've been involved with appraisal boards all over Texas, and, and I appreciate what y'all came up with and what you got mine. It's time somebody did something.
Well, we, we pushed the envelope, but I also want to say that Chief Appraiser and CAD staff have been very cooperative. It isn't like we've had the push and bar, we've just had the ask. They've done a very good job supporting the initiative that we brought to them. Now, the website looks, I think, when you look at it first, you know, the website, it is like your business, and that's yes, they've done a pretty good job.
Any other questions, comments? Um, I will, uh, toot the current board's horn a little bit. First of all, uh, Johnson County is the first county in the state of Texas to have primarily a citizen ran CAD board. And, uh, if I remember correctly, your last meeting, you set up a three-year appraisal cycle, correct?
That's right.
So every three years is when your next appraisal will be done on your property. So for three years?
There, there's exceptions to that.
Yeah, within exceptions of
In broad term, that's correct, and we've got some safety nets.
Yeah.
For example, if, and if some economists are predicting this, if the value of property declines in Texas, we'll trigger a red price, so you're not still operating.
Awesome. So they, they have been a very active, uh, board, and we have got boards from across the state calling and asking for information from these folks. They're, they're doing a fantastic job. Thank you, Mr. Goulding. Appreciate that very much. Um, I did share the copy of the, the information he sent me. Uh, we do have basically resumes on, on each of these five people. However, we are not bound to nominate these five people. If there are somebody else that you would prefer to put up for nomination, we'll accept that information, let, let's make a case for that person, and then we'll decide. Does anybody have anybody difference they want to nominate? No? Okay, I'll accept the motion then.
Make a motion, we nominate these five as stated in the presentation.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Johnny, to nominate the list of CAD candidates to be Dwayne Goulding, Amy Lingo, John Wood, Brandon Potts, and Jim Coswell. Is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome, and good luck. Okay, moving on to item number nine, or ten, excuse me. Discuss, consider possible action on a contract with Johnson County Emergency Services District Number One for providing fire extinguishing and emergency services. Uh, is this something we were going to discuss?
We're gonna have a discussion about, about the E S D, but not specifically this contract. This is one that, that we'll need to.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. White?
Yes.
Chief?
Mayor Campbell, good evening. Um, you'll see on page ten, that's the, the really changing, a lot of changes that I saw within the contract that the E S D is going to fund this with six hundred and nine thousand two hundred seventy four dollars for a year, and twelve, twelve ten worth of it. It's going to cover our salaries for a year. Another thing that, uh, E S D grant is possible to hold out the end of August is that their change in, uh, the E S D grant from, that it used to be two, two years at seventy five percent, he extended it to four years, seventy five percent. Um, the new grant is going to be for a total of six years, which the first four years are seventy five, and fifth year is thirty five, and then this year is complicated. And we are eligible if we want to take advantage of that, uh, ourselves, being as Alberto, we're in a God, and I have every stop screen that I was like, you see, uh, how we get on the budget.
Yeah. Um, does that, uh, grant include another officer or, or another firefighter, or we?
We, we, we could add some more. I, I'd like to see five per shift, but I could hit a minimum. If we couldn't do it, I'd like to see two per shift, which would be in addition to six firefighters. But they would pay for it, but keep in mind, we've got to pick it up.
Yeah.
And that's fifty years. They'll pay seventy five percent of sixty thousand.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion, we accept the contract, using the Johnson County E S D.
Okay, I got a motion by Shelley, seconded by Angela, to accept the Johnson County Emergency Services District Number One for providing fire extinguishing and emergency services. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, item number eleven, consider and possible action on Texas Municipal League Region Eight Director Election Ballot.
Mayor City Council, um, in your package, you have the official ballot with four names on the ballot. As a member, you'll add one vote. Your four members for Region Eight Director is Tori Don, Councilmember in Hawthorne City, Kim Greaves, Mayor of Westlake, John McHancy, Councilmember of Hurst, and Mary Sarver, Mayor of Grandview.
I have had long discussions with Ms. Sarver from Grandview. Uh, I think it would be very beneficial to Johnson County, to this area, to have a, a member uh, on the Region Eight Board for T X, T M L. Um, she is excited and motivated. She has been attending every conference, every meeting that she has been available for. Um, these other gentlemen, I, I've got nothing against, I don't know any of them. Uh, they have wonderful credentials according to the little bios that, that they sent out to us. Um, but Mary is, is probably the person that I think would be best for us to see on this on, on, on the, the board at T M L. So that's my opinion. Anybody else calling?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I will, uh, shock you by saying this, but I agree with you a hundred percent.
There's a guy.
Everybody hear that? Hey, put that one on the, on the record.
Hey, it's, it's
Mark that.
It's recorded, it's recorded.
It's recorded market, because I want to pull it back up every month, let him know. Uh, Noah, I, I actually migrated to that too, uh, when, when I read these names. Oh, the only one that's in our county, in our vicinity, is, is that one. Um, but yeah, I agree. She sounds like a good choice for us.
Any other comments, discussion?
I'm with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion, we nominate Mary Sarver.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Angel, seconded by Mike, to nominate Mary Sarver for our T M L Region Eight Director. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, at this time, uh, we are going to move into executive session.
One more.
Uh, we're going to move into executive session at this time.
Okay.
Um, it's seven fifty three, and we are adjourned. Recession, excuse me. I'd rather adjourn. Oh, at eight thirty six, I'm calling this meeting back to order. Hey, uh, going to item twelve, discuss, consider possible action on board appointments. Ms. Holloway?
Yes, sir. For the library, um, Palmer Barrett Burley. For type B, place two, Merle Brastine, place four, Dustin Dees, place six, Kim Henderson, place seven, Sarah Watts, and alternate two, Nicole Robertson. For planning a zone in seat one, Jason Audrick, seat two, Julian Torres, seat six, Robert Purdon, seat seven, Billy Jenkins. And move Kathy Sales from alternate one to alternate two. We have an alternate one vacant for now. zoning board of adjustments, seat two, Raymond Wiggly, seat four, move John Wada from alternate one to seat four. For type A E D C, seat two, Shelley Anderson, seat four, Linda Childers, seat six, move Carl Keaton um, up as alternate one to replace Josh Burns. And then animal services, seat one, Susie Stewart, seat two, Mike Kidd, seat three, Jeffrey Weldon, seat four, Barbara Rayner, seat five, Lee Bakent until next month. And alternate one, Dottie Carson. That's all.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to
Approve as read?
Approve as read.
I got a motion by Mike, seconded by Johnny, to approve the list of board appointments as read. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Uh, anybody have any questions on any of the staff reports? Chief Fuller, or acting chief Fuller, I guess is the proper term. Uh, I noticed, looking at the, the police, uh, lines, that our traffic stops have dropped significantly over the last year. Is there a specific reason for that?
Over the, the last year?
Yeah, uh, month to month, well, or whatever was, was on there.
I, I'm sure.
Okay.
And our traffic officer did need them for a night. Excuse me, this, we have another inch that's already taken up the slide.
Awesome.
Where did you see though?
Should we find another officer if we followed the school buses on and ticketed people who pass in school? No, I was, I was wondering if those tickets could fund the, could, could fund another resource.
You volunteering?
Because we, we think
No, I was wanting to speak on, on some of the locations that they park at.
He's gonna talk, he's gonna tell you where to go.
The other day, I almost got rear ended because I stopped, I was traveling south down the one seventy four by the Dollar General across from where it used to be Kelly's. And the buses were dropping off the kids at the, where's that, Joshua the Ranches or something? And nobody stopped right there, and that's immense.
Hey. That's, that's IS, that's ISD.
Nothing burns me up more than that.
Yeah, ISD police enforcement should be involved with that. That's what, that's what we're paying those yahoos for.
They can't, they can't write tickets, they can't write tickets.
Yes, they can. They are full of police officers.
We've burned them in school zones though.
No, I was on Terry?
I thought it was on
It was, uh,
How about, how about we ask for that on the next month's reports?
That's a good idea.
Tell us where their jurisdiction is, the ISD jurisdictions on the city streets. What's the status of that?
Let you limit it by mutual agreement, their pool of these officers, that would lead more jurisdiction in weeks.
We, we need to investigate that. So
Pretty sure it says on the school service. And that was their request, I believe.
Let's investigate that.
It could very well be. I'm, I'm not arguing that pool, but
We need to be, John will provide you, we have an A R local agreement, we just signed it recently.
Okay, let's, let's take that out. Thank, and, and by the way, the, the question I was asking, in August twenty twenty four, traffic stops were three ninety one, August twenty twenty three was seven oh three. So that's, that's a significant drop in a year. That's, that's the only reason I was asking.
People decided to slow down.
Yeah, that's, that's probably some of it, but make sure, they sure aren't. All right, any other questions on any of the?
We're better off.
Uh, uh, staff reports, okay? Um, future agenda request, um, we need to have a discussion next month concerning a request to lower speed limits on nine seventeen from the city limits into, uh, basically Santa Fe. Um, as we all know, a, a construction worker was struck and killed out there. Um, it, it had really not a whole lot to do with speed. Um, it wasn't an ebriated driver. Uh, but, um, a citizen has brought forth some information concerning how that road was designed and so on and so forth. Um, and he has asked us to consider, uh, supporting the dropping of the speed limit. So I would like to have that discussion, uh, during the work session on next month's agenda. Okay, and I will get a copy of, you, you guys will be getting copies of the, the letter he sent us into, uh, textile, inserting it. All right, any other agenda items? No? Okay, it is eight forty two, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, excuse me, no actions be taken on, on the executive session items. Now we're all right. Yeah.